All right, we'll call the meeting to order with the clerk take the role, please.
District one Barbara McQuinn.
Here.
District two Chuck Shaw. District three Karen Brill. District four Erica Whitfield, absent. District five Frank Barbieri. District six Marsha Andrews.
Here.
District seven Deborah Robinson.
All right, and the records should show that Inspector General Wong Chu is with us, Superintendent Dr. Fanoi is with us, and our board clerk, Mrs. Bass. Would you all please stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Superintendent, do you have some comments you'd like to make?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to take a moment to share a brief update on the procedures and processes with regard to coronavirus. While there still are no known cases of coronavirus in Palm Beach County, I would like to assure the board, students, and parents and staff that the district is being proactive. There's a lot going on behind the scenes. The district is in daily communication with the Florida Department of Health and other regulatory agencies. It is through collaboration and coordination with local, state, and federal officials that our schools are taking deliberate steps to disseminate information about coronavirus and its potential transmission within our school community. As county and state leaders, we must remain calm but deliberate in our efforts to inform and protect our community. Yesterday Chairman Barbieri and I joined Dr. Elena Alonso in a collaborative effort to update the Palm Beach County Board of Commissioners. Meantime Deputy Superintendent Mr. Oswald went to West Tech to deliver coronavirus update to the Glades Career Readiness Roundtable. As an educator and as a parent of two children, I know how important it is to maintain a sense of normalcy with our children. I encourage all parents to have calm and reassuring, age-appropriate conversations with your child or children. Again, our county has not been impacted by coronavirus and there are many adults taking measures to keep them safe. Principals at our 179 district-operated schools are going about their day and their lessons as normal. What children aren't seeing are all of the proactive steps we are taking to protect their health and the health of our staff. The district continues enhanced deep sanitizing methods on our campuses. This is a measure that I initiated late last month. Sanitation efforts have also increased on school buses. School nurses throughout the district are truly our eyes and ears as we monitor any infectious disease on our campus. These healthcare professionals report illnesses and trends so that the district can respond in real time and, when necessary, involve the Health Department. I also want you to be aware that district administrators have had a comprehensive infectious disease response plan in place to ensure that learning continues in the remote chance that our normal operations are disrupted. Again, if schools were to close for an extended period of time, we have a digital and broadband broadcast plan for the delivery of lessons. Technical staff is working with companies to try to get free Wi-Fi and free data plans into certain communities if we do end up closing schools. We have plenty of laptops available for students who need them. We also provide lessons on TV via the Education Network. One of the largest concerns, and understandably so, is travel. So new today, I have suspended all out-of-state, district-sponsored field trips until further notice. Effective immediately, out-of-state, district-sponsored travels such as Safety Patrol trips to Washington DC are canceled. I have also canceled out-of-state trips that the district has arranged for staff. I understand that some students and staff will be disappointed by this news, but as a district, we must do what we feel is in the best interest of our school community. I applaud those travel companies that are willing to work with the parents on this. I hope that those agencies that are not will reconsider. We will review all aspects of this, but again, my immediate concern is keeping everyone safe. As for in-state travel, I am still evaluating those trips and you will be updated as soon as decisions are made. Another concern is family-organized, out-of-country, spring break travel. The Health Department and the CDC is instructing staff and students who may be visiting high-risk countries including Italy, China, South Korea, and Iran to be well-aware of the recommendations to self-quarantine for 14 days upon returning. I cannot emphasize enough that consistent and continuing communication is key in a situation such as this. I have instructed our staff to ensure that parents and staff are receiving daily updates from the district. Staff members are also being updated by their principals. Again, it is critical that the lines of communication are open and transparent. This is the best way to avoid misinformation. For the most up-to-date and accurate information, please visit the district's dedicated coronavirus website, palmbeachschools.org/coronavirus. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Board members' comments? Ms. McQuinn, Ms. Brill?
Thank you, and actually I don't have any comments, but I do have a question for Dr. Fanoi. Will you be updating us on how we're going to be handling for students that do have to self-quarantine their absences and homework, and the same thing for any staff? And how those absences because, you know, we're mandating it?
Yes, we will update. There are some policies that the team is currently reviewing. I have a team upstairs currently looking at some of those aspects. So as soon as we have some definitive answers, we're also in conversation with the Florida Department of Education, all of our surrounding partners in reference, to make sure there's some consistency across the state. So yes, ma'am.
Just a quick follow-up, and I know this is premature, but I think we need to start also thinking in advance for any, if there are any schools that possibly close down. Some of those employees are hourly and will be losing their pay. So we have to look at the bigger picture, whether it's bus drivers, cafeteria workers, you know, people on staff at the schools, although we're not at that point now. I, you know, I don't want people to be fearful that they're not going to be able to put food on their table.
Yes, ma'am. All of those contingencies are being considered at this time.
Mrs. Andrews?
Thank you, and I'd like to thank Deputy Superintendent Keith Oswald, who actually came out to the roundtable yesterday and spoke with the community. And I would like to continue to ask the superintendent, as well as the deputy superintendent, the pieces that we actually informed the public of yesterday. The elected officials from the tri-city would love to have more dialogue with all of the community as we move forward. And we do appreciate the website, but as we know, some of the folks out there do not have it. But it was just interesting to hear Keith said that, you know, Comcast and some of the other agencies were going to be able to help us if we get into a point where we actually need to have Wi-Fi for the people. So I heard that yesterday and I was really pleased with that. But the continuous communications with the Glades region, which was very wonderful yesterday, to continue having these meetings out there so that we can update the parents and the community as it relates to the schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Robinson?
Thank you. I share the concerns of my colleagues relative to the impact of COVID-19. I happened to see PBS, I think it was yesterday, and the superintendent from, I think it was North Shore School District in Washington State was on. They closed schools at March 5th. What I remember from her comments was that they had 4,000 requests for laptops or other electronic devices for students, and as I recall, 500 mobile hotspots. To me, those numbers were alarming because they're much, much smaller than we are. And so I hope as we outline these contingency plans, that we are outlining big plans. Because I don't know, it seems to me, if I recall the numbers, we might comparatively be talking about like 40,000 laptops or some kind of huge number like that. And so I don't want us, while we're in this planning phase for this, what might be a worst-case scenario, that we plan too small. Thanks.
Thank you, Dr. Robinson. Mr. Shaw? And I have nothing at this time. So with respect to the inspector general search, Mr. Superintendent, if we could have Dr. Lucava and Mr. Mitchell come up? So board members, there's really three things we should probably talk about today. One is the timeline, so we can get that timeline adopted. One is the job description, and the third is the hiring search, whether we're going to hire a search firm or do it some other way. So maybe we should take the easiest one first, and that's the timeline? And, because the job description is probably going to take us a little longer. So all of you have a copy of that. Mr. Dr. Lucava, did you want to give us some input on the timeline that you've attached?
Sure. All these, there was a couple of things that I wanted to make sure that the board members knew about. On February 28th, we added a couple of documents to the board docs. And it included a couple of requests by Dr. Robinson. There was a table there for job descriptions from around the country, and we tried to break that up. Mark did a fantastic job in doing that. And then he also looked at job descriptions from across the country. I think several board members were looking for that as well. So we looked at all the school districts from across the country and then some within that are non-school as well. So we added that into board docs for your review as well. And then the final thing that Mark will kind of go through is a timeline that we are requesting that the board look at and vote on to approve at this moment. So I'm going to turn this over to Mark Mitchell.
Thank you, Dr. Lucava. And what we tried to do, just based on the last timeline we had, we tried to rough out the main milestones. You know, kind of keying off of, if you will, I think we already had the March 18th set up for the first read of the policy, Ms. Rico, I think. So we had the job description on there as well. I think that's on the agenda for next week. So just building the agenda is that being the main milestone for what comes after that. In terms of timeline to post, we actually reduced, given the upcoming retirement of Mr. Chu, we kind of reduced the timeline of posting. Instead of having a month, I think on this schedule, it reads about three weeks. We did that to try to have somebody here prior to June 1. So with that, the rest of the details are there, just to try to execute those main milestones.
All right, so board members, you all have a copy of the timeline prepared by HR? Do you have any questions? If not, we can take a motion to adopt this. Motion by Ms. Brill, second by Mrs. Andrews. Any discussion? Mrs. Andrews?
Where it says March 4th through 18th, negotiate and finalize a contract with a vendor. I know last time we did it, as a board member, I didn't know a whole lot about that. So if we go that route, I would like the board to be kept informed. And I would like to know exactly what's happened with the other vendor as it relates to negotiating and finalizing a contract with vendor. Are we talking about this vendor that we've had already or a new vendor? And where are we with the old vendor if we actually don't use him or use somebody else? That needs to be thoroughly discussed.
Yes, ma'am.
Dr. Robinson?
So I think that we're thinking along the same lines here. I would suggest for the purpose of approving this timeline that we remove the term vendor from the timeline until we decide how we're going to proceed. So I would offer, as an amendment, to remove vendor from the timeline.
All right, so negotiate slash finalize contract.
Correct, and I need a second on that.
Okay, so the motion has been amended by Dr. Robinson, second by Mrs. Andrews. And also Dr. Lucava, and number one, discuss process, timeline draft, scratch vendor on that one, too.
Number nine as well, I believe.
Yep.
Yep.
All right, so we, Mrs. Brill?
So I'm trying to understand, I don't, I'm not opposed to it, but I just don't know if it makes sense because when you look at like March 4th to the 18th, negotiate slash finalize contract, what contract are we talking about?
Well, we're going to-
Not with the vendor.
We're going, well, let's flip the order then and take up the vendor one before the timeline. So if you want to withdraw your motions, we'll take up the vendor issue first and decide what we're going to do with that.
Not the easiest.
Okay?
Or maybe we could leave an asterisk on the bottom and say if vendor is selected or something like that.
I would defer this piece till we discuss what we're doing.
You withdraw your, let's discuss the vendor issue first.
Well, I mean, whatever you want. We could just follow Dr. Lucava's recommendation with an asterisk to say if vendor is selected. So we could be done with the timeline.
Okay. Ms. McQuinn?
So I had Mrs. Brill's question, what contract were we finalizing? To me, it makes better sense for us to have the discussion of the vendor issue, then move back to the timeline.
Okay, so would you withdraw your motions and we'll get back to those shortly? Okay, everybody says yes, so we're throwing those motions. So let's talk about the vendor. Who goes first here? Dr. Robinson? I mean, I guess the question is, are we going to hire a vendor? If we are going to hire a vendor, are we going to hire the vendor we had before? Or are we going to go looking for a new vendor? Or are we going to have the district HR handle the advertising, so, and the vetting? Ms. Brill?
Well, I'll jump right in. So I still believe that we should do this as much arms-length as possible. So because of the nature of the job, you know, and it's no, believe me, it's no offense to our internal people. It's not meant that way. It's just because it has to be arms-length. And I'm, you know, Ray and Associates has a great reputation. Yes, we were not happy with some aspects of the search, but I don't have any problem going back and continuing to work with them if we give them the guidelines and they agree to them.
Okay, so my issue with doing that, first of all, is they need to understand that the information we asked for last time, we're probably going to want again this time. So they need to be told that we're going to expect that information that they didn't want to give us last time. And then if they don't want to take the job, they won't take it. I think that's critical because we did, that was the biggest issue, I believe, is that. And the other thing to understand is, whatever job description we adopt, they need to understand that that's not negotiable on their part. Whatever the board adopts is the job description. Those are the requirements. Don't bring us anybody that doesn't meet the requirements that we, you know, that we finally adopt. Mrs. Andrews?
Thank you, and I would like to say that I was, as I said early on when it came up, that I was concerned when they had indicated to me as a board member that they did not want to hear what my concerns were or could not answer those questions. That was a real concern as a board member. And if this is the person that's representing the school board in this contract, I feel that if I have to pick up the phone and ask a question, I should be able to do that. That was a concern of mine. But then I don't know, how much money have we paid them? Are we going to have to pay them more? All of those pieces are very important to me when we start talking about where we go from here. And so we're kind of saying we're going to have a vendor. Have we paid them off from before? Those questions have not been answered to me satisfactorily as a board member when I'm thinking about monies and things that we need to think about as we relate to children and schools and wasting money. So if we have someone that can do this job, I know we have done these jobs before here in the district. So if this is going to increase the fee for them, I need to know that before I just say I would like to have them.
Dr. Lucava, do you know what they're charging us for what they did up to the point that we terminated their services?
Yes, we have all that information.
Yeah, I can respond to that. The contract called for three payments, depending on, you know, the deliverables that were met, you know? So the first two were met, the final obviously was not. So by contract, we were obligated in a scheduled payments for those first two payments. The third was not met. Now they have some ancillary expenses there per the contract they're able to bill us for, and those bills are coming in as well. So we are making payments per contract on that first contract.
Are they, well, if we, maybe you haven't had discussion with them, but if we retain them to continue on with us, are they going to give us any kind of credit for those fees that we've already paid? Are they going to start from scratch?
I don't know the answer to that, Mr. Barbieri, but certainly a good question.
Dr. Robinson?
Thank you. I am, I'm a little bit torn by this. I have mixed feelings. We had an outstanding relationship, I believe, with Ray and Associates when we searched for superintendent, right? It appears to me that their forte is not searching for an IG. I was just like terrifically disappointed. So, you know, and interestingly, I was trying to dig through this. In 2012, and maybe Mr. Mitchell will recall this, it appears that our own HR department did the advertising and search for the IG. Does anybody have a recollection as I'm digging through documents?
I don't actually. I mean, if I racked my brain for a little while, I'm sure I could, but.
Yeah, actually, on, looks like we had a conversation about the IG hiring process brought by Mrs. Brill on February 15th, 2012. And then going forward, it looks as though our own HR department did it. So I understand this like concept of a distance, but I guess for me, I just need to know if we, if we have the, the, I can't find the right word, if we have the man or woman power and skill sets needed to do it because we're on a short timeline. You know, I was trying to search to see if there were any companies that specialize in IG searches. I wasn't able to answer that question. But I really want to be clear about my expectations, right? And so first, however we go about this, we need to make sure that everybody who applied the first go-round receives written notice that it has reopened and that they are encouraged to apply. Secondly, whoever does it, I would expect to receive the screening chart that says the criteria by which the applicants were screened and which applicant met which criteria. I think that what I've heard from my fellow board members is that we want each applicant to know that they should submit references or letters of recommendation with their application so that we can see them. We need to make sure, in addition to the agencies that we advertised with before, that there's this Federal Council of the Inspector Generals on Integrity and Efficiency, that that might be a source for us as well. And then, lastly, and I think maybe my biggest concern is as I recall from our superintendent searches, that during the background was where we really leaned on these outside search firms. And so the question is, can we do the kind of background search that needs to be done? I think in the past, our school police helped us with, maybe when we did the Inspector General search in 2012, but certainly they're a resource for us. I think that we have a communications department that can search all social media for anything on folks, which I would expect to be less common there for superintendents, but nevertheless, that search should take place. And then the other thing that comes to mind, and maybe it's because I watch too many spy movies, is the financial background. I don't know. I won't even get into my conspiracy theories led by spy movies, okay? But just to know that maybe that they are in such a situation that they would not be at risk, if you follow me? So I mean, for me, the what is important. And then after the what needs to happen, we can talk about, well, and I guess I need Dr. Lucava to tell me if he thinks that he and his staff can do those things.
The Human Resources Division can, you know, do the search, do the interviews, do all these things that you're asking about.
Including the backgrounds?
We'd have to, yeah, those, especially the background, as I heard them, was, you know, we can contract with, there's agencies in Florida, we've done that before, to contract with background searches, so we can do that. The financial search, I think, would be a separate vendor to do that. So we're talking, you know, building of the timeline, getting that set up with two different vendors to do those contractual things. So there's some logistics time we need to do that, but it's doable, but there's fees to those as well.
So what I suggest is, and I took a different position on the last one, but I believe we'll have more control if we use our own HR department. They're going to give us the information we want. We're not going to get a vendor that tells us that's confidential and we can't have it. Even if HR has to meet with each one of us individually because something shouldn't be made public, they can meet with us and we don't have any issues with Sunshine or anything else. So with all due respect, Ms. Brill, I think that we probably should just do this in-house this time. And as long as they give us the name of every single person that's applied and there's a background check, I don't know why they would have any way to skew the result. And I'm not suggesting they would, but it appears that there doesn't need to be this total independence between our HR department and this search, Ms. Brill?
Okay, so I'm going to go back and still say I won't support that. I still think it needs to be independent. I have no interest in micromanaging the process with regard to a chart that says how people are phased in or phased out and approved. We will know, we have to make it very clear, whoever does it, whether it's you or an outside agency, Ray and Associates, these are what the job requirements are. Anyone that doesn't meet all those requirements is out, period. As far as references go, it's fine for them to provide it, but being an old HR person myself, you don't check references, do you? Question to you guys, when someone submits an application, you don't do it until they come up in the finals or when you're, you know, closer to offering them the job. So I have no interest in your checking references on people when it's sent in. So that's my question for you with regard to references.
Yeah, in our policy, we only check the one, and that's the latest one.
And when do you check it in terms, you don't do it when they submit their application. You do it when you're seriously considering them, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so, you know, that would be my, you know, I just, if we do it in-house, I don't want it micromanaged that way. I'm concerned about staff time also. Again, I still feel that the best choice would be Ray and Associates. So I will vote against in-house, but obviously we'll work with whoever we choose.
Ms. McQuinn, then Dr. Robinson?
So I don't care whether it's Ray and Associates or some other vendor or in-house. If someone else cares greatly, I'll see if I agree with that. But in terms of references, so my experience is, first of all, we don't want anyone to come forward who doesn't check every single box in the job description. I think I'm hearing that for sure. Then, if, however we determine who we want to have an interview, those are the only references I would check. But I, I mean, I want a thorough background check, thorough.
Okay.
No good then.
Dr. Robinson?
Okay, so several things. So first, as I recall, in this first go-round, one candidate submitted a bunch of letters of recommendation and the others did not. So my point in making my comment was to say, let them know that they are encouraged to submit all their letters of recommendation, right? So we don't have that kind of disparity in background information. Now, and I'm going to read them, right? I don't, you know, HR can do their thing, but I'm going to read them. Now, the other thing is, in terms of this chart, I don't consider this micromanaging. I consider this accountability. So what I believe we do, what I hope we do for other positions is when people are screened, let's take position XYZ, and then somebody screened out and they called to complain, why didn't I get an interview? There is a chart or matrix where it says because you didn't have, you know, item three, right? Am I making sense?
Yes.
We do this for quote, "lower-level positions." Am I correct? Okay, because I believe we're doing that and I think that that's a way that we have transparency and have some fairness is by having those charts that we can refer back to long after the screening date. And so I would ask for nothing less for candidates for IG, that there would be such a chart that I could refer to to see that, yes, check, 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 and that candidate number 35 did not meet criteria D, and that's why they weren't screened in. I mean, for me, it's not micromanaging at all. To me, it's accountability. Thank you.
Mrs. Andrews?
And thank you. I do want those letters of recommendation. But as you get closer to the end, certainly you're going to pick up the phone or the consultant, the vendor will pick up the phone and really do that one-on-one evaluation reference with the last place of employment. But I just know from my years of being in HR when those top positions, we did have those letters of recommendations in the file. And they may not be the total thing you're looking at because as you get to the end, I do expect you all or the vendor to really make sure that you call and get the best information possible based on the people's credentials, their job performance, and everything else.
Ms. Brill?
So just to be clear, there's a difference between letters of recommendation and references. So asking for them to provide the letters of recommendation is wonderful, but it's, I was discussing checking their references.
Mrs. Rico?
Thank you. Just as a point of information, there's a lot of directives that are coming out of this conversation, very specifically, which is informative to HR or the vendor, whoever it is. My suggestion would be that- My suggestion would be that perhaps at the conclusion of this meeting, that a list of all of those specifics get drafted and that comes back to the board next week for a vote. So whether it's a scope attached to a contract or the directions that HR should follow, that they've captured every one of your instructions in a way that the board votes on it as a whole.
Good. I see that Mr. Mitchell was scribbling all that stuff down as we were saying it anyway, so I'm sure he's got it. All right, so, board members, we need to make a decision on whether HR is going to do this or we're going to hire an outside vendor. And then we can make a decision on how we're going to pick an outside vendor if that's the board's decision. So I'm ready for a motion, one way or the other. Dr. Robinson.
I move that our own HR department manage this search for Inspector General.
Seconded by Mrs. McQuinn. Discussion. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. There's six of us here, four-two, with with Ms. Brill and Mr. Shaw opposed to the motion. All right, so that takes care of the vendor issue for now. So let's go back to the timeline. So, Dr. Lakava, is there anything that you want to change on here now that you you've got the job?
Yeah, no, thank you very much. Let me just go through it quickly.
Mr. Barbieri, if I might, just as a point of information again, I would just add to the timeline, coming back next week with the exact instructions for carrying out the search.
Yeah, I think we're okay.
Subject to further thought, but before the eighteenth, it looks okay. I said, subject to further thought, it looks okay, you know, that we can.
No, no further thought, you need to decide.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, no problem. So the only thing I guess we're going to add based on the General Counsel's comment is, on March eighteenth, you'll bring back, you know what you're bringing back?
Yes, sir. A list of instructions.
Correct.
Parameters for the search, yeah.
Yeah, actually, we can take off, approve the contract, but not the timeline, so that comes off.
Mm-hmm.
So.
We can bring a revised timeline next week if that's preferable.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, why don't we do that, since you guys are now the integral part of the timeline, so.
Mark, could I, just if you don't mind, Mr. Chairman, if your team can have that ready before the board meeting?
Yes, sir.
So the board members can have it in case there's any revisions. We're not doing it at the board meeting. We can take care of all of that prior to the meeting.
Yes, sir.
Because you know we don't like to get stuff on the day of the board meeting, even though sometimes you guys have questions on the day of the board meeting. Thank you. All right, so, do we need to motion that, Madam General Counsel, or we just instructed them to bring it back to us next week? Superintendent agreed to?
You can just, you can have a vote on that, that's fine, but I think they've got.
Okay.
I got direction from me.
Superintendent has spoken. Okay, so that takes us to the job description. So my suggestion, only my suggestion, is the HR department prepared a job description, a suggested job description that has all kinds of new stuff in it that we didn't have before, which is basically mirrors a lot of what's in the state statute. So my suggestion is we start with this and decide whether we like everything here, we're going to add anything, take anything away, rather than trying to compare it to all of the different job descriptions that have been put in our book for us. So, Dr. Robinson?
Thank you. I want to thank HR and and Mr. Mitchell and the Office of the Inspector General for, like, all the paperwork you've given us, and I spent all this time making my own little charts and comparing and contrasting before I got yours and figured out that, yeah, it was basically based on statute, but, so, you know, it's a work of love. So the only thing that I would change with this is, so number three and four, so, so what's listed, ten years of responsible work experience and one or more, or one or a combination of following fields, that's actually, in my world, going to be number four, and then the bullets underneath are part of that. But I would list as number three, progressive supervisory and managerial experience required. So the way I read this as it exists, the progressive supervisory and managerial experience only really applies if you've been in an investigative public agency similar to the IG's office, but it wouldn't apply if you had been a federal, state, or local law enforcement official, so on and so forth. So technically, you could have, you could, based on this, would meet the criteria if you had been a state court judge and supervised three people in your whole life or something. So I think that, and I think that came out in our previous board workshop, the importance of having that managerial experience. So I would like that language to be a separate bullet item, and I would put it as number And then for the ten years of responsible work experience and one or more, or one or combination of following fields, I guess then because of ways where you don't need ors in there.
Correct.
Okay? So that would be my only suggestion, is to highlight the importance of the progressive supervisory and managerial experience being required, and list that as number three.
So you would take Roman numeral four, I mean, Roman, well, number four, Roman numeral five, and change that to its own freestanding?
No, so I would take, I would make, so if you look at it, was listed as number four, there's nothing there, right?
Oh, I see, yeah, I see.
Okay. So that, the words that are listed for number three, I would just put them as number four.
Yeah, so this drops.
And then make number three, read progressive supervisory and managerial experience required, period. So no matter which one of these, whatever these numbers are, lowercase roman numerals one through five, you would still be required to have this progressive supervisory and managerial experience.
In an investigative public agency similar to an Inspector General?
No, period, period. Now, your question, I think, is really, what do we do with, like, little roman numeral five?
Right.
Right? And so I would say that we just say that you could come from an investigative public agency similar to the IG's office, and since we put the progressive supervisory and managerial experience as number three, then there's no need to repeat it there. Does that make sense?
If I may, I think you're saying to strike through with progressive supervisory managerial experience, we just strike through that in roman numeral little V?
In little five?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, honestly, I don't care if it stays, right? Because I think that what it, what they were saying there is that you had this experience in an agency similar to an IG, but you weren't a federal, da-da-da-da-da. All I'm saying is, whether it stays there or not, I want it to be separate as number three. I want to be clear that we, you are required to have progressive supervisory and managerial experience, no matter which line, professional line of work you came from.
Okay.
Does that make sense? And then what you want to do with that language in number, in roman numeral five, like, I don't really care, as far as I'm concerned, it can stay there or it can be removed, but I just, no matter which run through four, you still need to have that progressive supervisory and managerial experience.
Okay. That's a motion by Dr. Robinson?
Yeah, you got it. Do you need me to say it again? Okay. So that's a motion.
Mrs. Andrews, you second that motion? Discussion? Go ahead, Mrs. Andrews.
Yes, I brought it up the last time we met, this piece that we're talking about right now, because I wanted to make sure, how many, we have a whole lot of employees up there in Mr. Chu's office, and maybe, Mr. Chu, can you tell us a little bit about your office, how many people you have up there and the different levels of supervisory? Can you, can you help us with that?
I would say at least four to five will have progressive supervisory experience.
No, I was asking about how many employees you have in your department, in your division, and the different supervisors that you have there already.
Right now, we have, under me, we have an audit director, investigating director, and a court reassurance. And then we have a legal counsel. So managerial position, we have those four heads. We do have one, another person been doing audit supervisor for years. So I would say at least five of them will have, will fit in this number five.
And your total?
Total staff, eighteen. But me, it would be nineteen.
Ms. McQuinn.
I'm, I'm, I know that I've just missed this piece. What we're saying managerial experience, did we also include supervisory experience? Because you can, okay, we did include supervisory. Thank you.
Yeah, number three would be progressive supervisory and managerial experience, period. Required. And none, four, number four, roman numeral five, would stay exactly the way it is. Do we see a conflict with that, General Counsel, with the two?
It seems redundant.
It's redundant, but is it?
A little bit redundant, but.
Well, one requires ten, ten years, the other one just says required, so it could be three months. I I've got progressive supervisor managerial experience required, and I've done that for a month in a job somewhere, so.
No, you may want to clarify that then.
So, Dr. Robinson, you want to put some time on that?
Yeah, I think that's a very good point, Mr. Barbieri. So I think I would like to amend my motion for line number three to say, ten years of progressive supervisory and managerial experience required.
Okay, so amendment is accepted by Mrs. Andrews. Discussion on that, so then I suggest we delete number, small numeral five, because it's the same thing as what we're just changing three to. So you want to make that, since I can't make a motion, Dr. Robinson?
So maybe this is just my lack of knowledge, but, so then, I don't know what investigative public agency similar to an IG's office would be, but it seems to me that if we delete all of little roman five, that we're blocking out people who are coming from such an agency, who otherwise might meet the criteria. So my, I would then just strike in baby five, the words, as a person with progressive supervisory and managerial experience in. Or maybe it's, wait, let me read what it should be, and see if I can make it make sense. As, and if, wait. Okay, as a person in an investigative public agency similar to an Inspector General's office.
Yes.
Okay, Mrs. Andrews, do you agree to that modification? Question, go ahead.
And maybe that's to Mr. Chu. What kinds of agencies would we be talking about with that piece?
You've got to remember, some of the SOBs may not be called audit or IG SOB. It could be like court reassurance, it could be something like special unit. In New York, they call it differently, a commission on something, something. So as long as we can see their work duties are similar, I think the name is not as critical.
Okay, that's good.
Okay, so just to clarify, the motion would be ten years of progressive supervisory managerial experience required, which would be number three. And a little, small little five would just say, as a person in an investigative public agency similar to an Inspector General's office.
Correct.
That's your modified motion?
Yes.
You agree to that, Mrs. Andrews? Ms. McQuinn?
Just word smithing again. So we took out the word from number three, we took out the word responsible, because we kept the word responsible, because I would want that defined.
Mr. Barbieri? Want to have a minute?
Mr. Mitchell?
I was just going to make sure, from the reading of of the other IG job descriptions we have from around the country, I want to make sure we're aware, we're significantly changing the requirements. We're going from ten years of basically working to now ten years of management. That that's a significant change. I just want to make sure we're considering that, because now you're saying ten years of management versus just ten years of working in the, in the place. So I just want to make sure we're, we're clear on that. Because responsible work experience is different than managing, you know? So you may have actually twenty years in a place to have ten years of work experience plus another ten years of management, so you're narrowing your net a little bit. Just want to make sure we're aware.
Dr. Robinson?
Thank you for that. Yeah, I was trying to figure that out on the, on the fly, so, but let me first just respond, if I may, to Mrs. McQuinn. So the, so if the words, ten years of responsible work experience and one or a combination of the following fields, actually belongs to number four. It's just not aligned right on our paper. It looks like number three, and then number four is kind of blank with all the baby roman numerals. So that language moved to number four. And so now we're deliberating on the words for number three. So I guess maybe I would like to hear maybe from our Inspector General about the, the point about ten, so ten years of responsible work experience in any of these areas. What would you, do you have an opinion on whether it should say ten years or maybe five years of progressive supervisory and managerial experience?
I think your suggestion is, is acceptable, because I think ten years would almost guarantee, if that person been that job for ten years as a supervisor, it's going to work out. And then the other ten years of the combination, if you are, if you have the supervisor experience, naturally, the other ten years will qualify you on the job. So I think a ten-year supervisory managerial experience is a, is a good requirement.
Mrs. Andrews?
I believe so, Mr. Chu, because as I remember looking at all those applications, most of them had had the, you know, the ten years of work, and when you really got down to the managerial piece, as Inspector General and supervising the big office, it wasn't that many years. So you're going to get them with the ten years, but I think if you kind of limit it now to ten years for the progressive supervision and managerial experience, wow, you're going to get the creme de la creme, which is nice.
Or we're going to get nobody. Yeah, so that.
Nobody, it's going to cost you a lot more money.
So, yeah, so with all that, I agree, I understand the creme de la creme, I just don't know, yeah, they might be making good money, be nice and happy where they are, doing a great job, right? So maybe they're not willing to come to, you know, beautiful Palm Beach County, but, so, given that input, would you want to give me any other input before, so I could just make one more change to my motion, any other?
Oh, no, ma'am, but thank you for asking.
No?
No, ma'am.
Okay, so then.
Ms. McQuinn, you have a suggestion?
Well, I was going to let her make the motion first. I just, I'm going to word smith. I want to know the difference between responsible and successful, between number three and number five. Or why we use two different words? Because successful to me means I can look at someone who supervised that person, or I can look at their evaluations and know whether they were successful. I don't even know what, I do know what responsible means. I just want to know where it belongs in the, in this.
I'm sorry, I'm not sure of the question, the difference between the meanings.
I'm asking for the, okay, and number three, we have some amount of years, well, ten years of responsible work experience. What does that mean? Responsible work experience.
Your point's well taken. I mean, these are typical words you find in job descriptions.
I just don't like too many words.
Responsible, successful, and so forth. I mean, I hear you.
Yeah, if it's, if we don't need the word, let's strike the word.
We're certainly successful.
Thank you, I'm happy with that. Yep.
Are we talking number five, where it's a successful experience? So the question is, do we delete the word successful and replace it with something else or just leave it experience and managing through to, what is she talking, she's talking about five?
In number three, ten, ten years of responsible, strike that word and replace it with successful, correct?
The current three, that's now going to be four. The current three that's now going to be four.
No, there is no, it's, there is no four, so the current number, three is going to become number four, and we're going to insert in number three, ten years of progressive supervisory and managerial experience required, that's currently what's on the floor. So that becomes number three. The question is, you look at number five, and it's a successful experience in managing through, what does successful mean, or how are we going to measure success?
Thank you.
Right? Is that what you were bringing up, Mrs. McQuinn?
Yes, and actually, I was going to bring that up as, you know, I don't know how you quantify successful or responsible, and so I think you just remove those words, and that's it.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
We're just, we're just adding on to the motion. Just adding it on, and we'll state it all again at the end, so we're just, we're striking the word successful in number five.
Oh, I see. And responsible in number new four. Got that, okay. I'm just trying to follow the balance of...
Okay, we're taking out, that says, ten years of responsible work experience in number four, we're going to take out the word responsible, and in number five, we're taking off the word successful. Dr. Robinson?
Okay, so, somebody needs to help me understand why, because, so I get these are nice words, and they're descriptors, and so in my mind, this is, this is why we have a chart, right? And this is where I would ask that our HR folks say their way in on what they think is successful or not, as they're looking through the resumes, I don't, everything's not quantifiable, I mean, I, I wish it was, but it's not.
Well, if I may?
Yes.
I mean, typically, those words, successful and so forth, would give us some latitude, let's say a person didn't have a, a good evaluation for one of those years they claimed of experience, then you could go back and say, well, there's an issue here, you know, so that's typically why you put words like that in the job description, successful. You know, we have that on, on our teacher form, when they submit years of experience, it has to be, of course, with the, with the effective evaluation and so forth, so that's why those words are in there.
But how would you quantify successful? I mean, talking to these...
If your evaluation was effective or greater, you know, so if you, if you're claiming ten years, but you had one of those years where you were, you know, needs improvement or what have you, that's not effective, you could say that wasn't successful.
Yeah.
This gives you some latitude, you got to understand, remember how job descriptions are used, and the end of the day, there are some legal ramifications there for people applying and so forth.
Because right now, in number five, if we remove successful, it just says experience in managing, so everybody's experienced, but how do you, you know?
Yeah, but we're...
Dr. Robinson?
Okay, so, well, for that example, everybody's not experienced in managing through to com, completion, complex investigation, so it's the following words I think are more important. So your, your comments, though, actually now makes me understand, or makes me agree with the removal of these nice words, because if somebody had ten years of experience, and there was like one bad year, and there was, you know, politics at play, right? Then I would not want that person to be automatically discounted, because now, and then that's when, that's when getting into the, the details of the applicant become important. So now, you just made, I think, made the case for my colleagues who want to remove those nice words.
So, so we're back to removing successful and responsible out of those two? Is it that you have all that? Good. Go ahead, Dr. Robinson.
Because I never made it back to five years, did I? Four. So I want to amend my previous motion, that was amended and amended and amended, to say, five years of progressive supervisory and managerial experience required.
Okay, that's the new number three.
Perfect, perfect, that's good.
And that's seconded by Dr., by Mrs. Andrews. So now we have a complete motion with all the changes in it.
Yeah, I got it.
Any...
Okay, on Dr. Robinson's motion to add number three, five years progressive supervisory and managerial experience required, in number four, roman numeral five, remove the words with progressive supervisory and managerial experience, so it now reads, "as a person in an investigative public agency similar to an investig, inspector general's office," and to remove in number four, the words responsible, and in number five, the word successful, seconded by Mrs. Andrews.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Before, are you okay with this?
Yes, sir.
No, general counsel, you see no conflicts here, everything's peachy keen, right? Okay. Vote was six, zero. Does that mean we're done? Dr. Lucava, since you now have a new job, would you tell us whether or not we're done tonight?
No, the only, the only clarification I would like is on the timeline between April fifteenth and twenty-first, which is the audit committee review and input, I would like to know specifically what the board would like us to do at the audit committee, so there's no confusion when we get to the audit committee.
That's a great, that's, because I had a note there and I forgot it, so I'm glad you brought that up. We need to deal with how, how the audit committee is going to have it, give, given us input on this, so, Dr. Robinson?
So I would like as much input as possible, actually, so I think that I would like, I would like the audit committee to weigh in on the candidates, to have all the applications, and your chart on who met which criteria, and have them just, you know, weigh in on what they see.
Okay, so observational data, not ranking data, correct?
No, I don't think I want them to rank, I think that's our responsibility.
If I may, just want to ask a question to Mrs. Rico, is there any, if we have any guidance around what the contents of that discussion should be, anything out of bounds or inbound?
No, we had, thanks for the question, we had issued a memo around, you know, discriminatory issues and those kinds of things, I think that they've been in receipt of that guidance, so...
So if we shared that with the audit committee, if it hasn't been shared already?
If it hasn't been shared already, it's more than proper, thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Rico, could, could you make sure that, at the meeting, that this is going to be discussed, that either you or, I know Blair's always there to explain exactly your memo to them, so that the, all the, they're all, you know, very experienced business people, so I'm sure they get it, but can you just make sure that's, so then it'll be on the record explained?
Sure, no problem.
Okay, Doc, Doc, go ahead.
If I recall, in one of our workshops around this, there was some question from the board about the timeline in which the audit committee received the information in order to, to have an informed discussion, I just, I just don't remember, I just knew something, I just would love for whoever brought that up to bring it back up, so we can make sure we meet those, those timelines.
So the issue was, just so, I'm sure you all remember, the issue was, if they get it too early, Mr. Maher, who are resident, you know, education reporter, will put it in the paper before all of us get to see it, so we, we gave them a timeline last time so that the public didn't get to see it before the board members got to see it, so we wanted them to turn it in as close as possible to the time of the meeting, so Mr. Maher wouldn't have an opportunity to grab it from a public records request and print it. Of course, he could just agree, he won't do that, but then we have this sun sentinel that might not agree with Mr. Maher, so that was the issue, is, is if they give it to us too early, you are all going to see it in the paper before we get it. Good, Dr. Robinson?
I just want to make sure that I understand what you're saying, if, if the people that applied, if the applicants' names and resumes and so forth are known too early, then before it gets in the press before we get it, is that what you're saying?
No, because they're going to have the information, right? They're going to get all the information, the names and everybody, so what, what gets in the paper is, the audit committee says these people, they think are best qualified, and these people aren't. And we're, the, the public's going to see that before you all do, because by the time we get to the meeting and it's passed out to us, it's going to be in the paper already, it's going to be out there, or it's going to be online in the, in the, in the, in the different medias.
Okay, so I think, and maybe this is part of the instruction, first off, I don't care if it gets in the paper before I see it, I mean, I'll probably be at the meeting, but that's not really an issue for me, but I think that we can make sure the audit committee knows, we're not asking them to make the call, so to speak, right? I'm, I would like to hear their comments, right? So, and I think most of them would probably speak in affirmative as much as possible, but if there's somebody, for example, who had a, a gap in their work for five years, you know, I would expect them to point that out, and they wouldn't say that person is not qualified, they might point out this person has this gap, right? So, I'm sorry? Right, but I'm, so I'm just asking them to, to tell us what they see that I might not see.
And I guess, come, come to think about it, the other issue that the audit committee members had was, they wanted to have a discussion among themselves of each one of these people, so that's all going to be public anyway, before we ever see it, the audit committee is, is public, and so, you know, I don't think, no, there's any way we're going to protect against it, being out there before we get a chance to see it, because they want to have a discussion. They were kind of concerned last time that they weren't able to sit there at the table and discuss the different people among themselves, so that they had the benefit, like we do, of different thoughts, so I think that that's not going to make a difference this time, that give them the opportunity, Dr. Lucava?
My only, I don't know if it's a question, or I just want to make sure it's clear, will a link to the video of their feedback suffice, or would you like that in a table or some type of, I'm just asking?
So last time, and I think it's Mrs. Brill who asked, but I know that those of us who could wanted to come to the audit committee meeting, because I remember asking the question, and we were told that it is recorded, so we can hear it, is it recorded live, can, or no?
Is it recorded live? We could have that, we can have it live.
Personally, I would like for it to be, to be able to access it live, in the event that I can't be here.
And video recorded, we send out the link if you're not here?
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah, Mrs. McQuinn, I'll make sure that, we, we can set that up to make sure that it's live for the board.
Thank you very much.
Dr. Robinson?
So, Dr. Lucava, I appreciate you embracing the chart.
I don't want to forget anybody's opinion.
Wonderful.
Before I leave, I want to make sure I'm clear.
Well, I think we've given you enough work assignments, and so since, I mean, I, I intend to be there, or watch it live, so I create my own chart, how about that? But, in terms of the scheduling, is, if the applications will be available for review on April fifteenth, then I, we need to schedule the audit committee maybe like on April twentieth, so they have at least several days?
Somewhere in that window, yeah.
Yeah, and then that would give us, if it was, for example, if it was April twentieth for the audit committee meeting, then that would give us two days to digest the input from the audit committee before we shortlist.
So, so the audit, the April twentieth would be a Monday, the audit committee's never met on a Monday, so it'll be up to whether there can be quorum there to get that done, so we need to be flexible on this, if we're going to adopt that as a date, because the audit committee may not be able to be there on the twentieth, Dr. Robinson, so...
Okay, so they normally meet on what, Fridays? So then...
That would be the seventeenth.
That would be the seventeenth, I would just then see if the applications could be available for review by the thirteenth. I mean, I do, I want, they're volunteers, and we ask a lot, so I would like to give them as much time as possible to, you know, to, to look at those documents.
Mrs. Brill?
I think that Dr. Lucava and Mr. Mitchell know what we want in there, and why don't we just have them bring it back incorporating what Dr. Robinson has asked for, and just bring us back, rather than us looking at the calendar and trying to give direction?
No problem.
That way, since you have to tweak it for yourselves as well.
Yeah.
So you're real, you're really the experts on the timetable.
Very good, and I think for those that can't make it to the live audit committee, we will send out the information by email, and maybe they can make their comments via email, via service, so we can have multiple venues for their opinions.
Okay, yes. So you'll work with the inspector general's office, and they can check with the audit committee members to see when they can make the meeting. Are they?
Perfect.
Yep, there's an audit committee meeting scheduled for nine AM on April seventeenth, so...
And I want a cupcake, because on April eighteenth is my birthday, so...
Well, yeah, we'll make sure, we'll make sure you get a cupcake.
I'd board a cupcake.
Okay, so I think we're good for tonight? Any other comments you would like? Nope? Any motion, general counsel? Okay, motion to adjourn? Motion by Mrs. Andrews, seconded by Dr. Robinson, all in favor, opposed, motion carries, six, zero, meeting adjourned.